Okay, let's call the meeting to order. This is Warminster Township Board of Supervisors for Thursday, February 2nd. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave men and women serving overseas. Thank you. All right, a couple announcements. We had an executive session previous to this meeting. We went over litigation and personnel issues. I, we're wait, we have to get Kathy on the phone. Kathy's not going to be able to attend in person tonight. She's suffering a little bout of pneumonia, I believe it is. So she's recovering, she's doing okay, so but she'll be have to call in. So bear with us a second. We're having all kinds of technical difficulties today. While we might as well continue on, Mark, do you have any announcements?
I have a few, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I appreciate it. First one is park and rec announcements. The facility permit request, including pavilion rentals, have moved online. Visit warministerpa.myrec, M-Y-R-E-C, dot com. And we're going to have Jess come into the next meeting, I believe, and go over with the people how to set this up. Once you set that app up for you and your family, this is the way all things are going to be run through Park and Rec, and it's very simple. So we'll be able to use that to book the picnics and use of facilities and whatnot. Also, the Easter egg scramble is scheduled for April the 6th at 4:30. Pre-registration is available via warministerpa.myrec.com. And it's limited to the first 500 participants, ages three to 10. Anyone that's interested in that. And we'll go over some more at another time, how to go on to this, warministermyrec.com. I've been asked by the Rotary Club to do a few announcements. We stole some spaces open for the fundraiser Super Bowl block poll, which it's fairly simple to go on warministerrotary.org, right Dalton? And it's very simple to register and reserve your blocks for this. And this will fund our four-way speech contest, which is coming up in March. It's a very good cause, and you win some money. Nello usually wins every year, but maybe somebody else will, he's lucky. Maybe somebody else will get it this year. And also, the Warminster Rotary Annual Golf outing is coming up on April the 28th. 12 o'clock shotgun start. And again, go to warministerrotary.org to reserve your spots, and sponsorships are available. Now, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd ask for a little bit of latitude. I have one other announcement I'd like to make. Bear with me, I'm a little bit nervous on this one. This has been a lifelong ambition of mine, to be an elected official and represent the people. And honestly, it's been the greatest job of my life, greatest, bar none. And with an extremely heavy heart, I have to announce that I will not be seeking reelection next November or in the upcoming primary. And I have to tell you again, it's the greatest job I've ever had, but I just, I just don't have the stomach for another run. I just don't at this time. Who knows what the future holds, but for now, the best thing for my health and for my family is to sit this one out. But I'll be look forward to finishing my term and serving with all of you has been a tremendous honor and the people that I've served with in the past. And you know, people get down on us township supervisors. This is a labor of love. It is. I mean, one day, over a cigar, Leo and I, Leo Quinn and I sat down over a cigar and figured out that a township supervisor in Warminster makes about four cents an hour, if that.
If that.
So you know, we're not sitting up here making tons of money, contrary to what I've read on social media recently. But thank you for the latitude I'm making. I wanted to get that off my chest before the meeting started.
Yeah.
I'll be here for the rest of the year, and we'll have some fun.
Yeah, yeah, looking forward to that, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thanks for your years of service.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure to work with you, Mark. And again, thanks for your years of service.
Thank you.
All right. That's, that was unexpected.
He said, "Any surprises tonight?"
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Janice, go ahead.
Well, now that we're in February, in the month of love, I would like everybody to share some love with our police officers we have in here and our community servants throughout our township and make sure that you show them some love, care, and compassion. And have a great February.
Judy?
I have no events, except to remind you that March 25th is our camp-in at the Warminster Public Library. There'll be tents of information. It's going from, I think it's 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock. There's going to be schmores and campfires and balloons and games for the kids. It should be a great time at the library. And so save the date and get your family out to the library and have a nice month of love, as Janice said.
All right. Kathy, you have anything to add?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, one last thing for me. I know I work with a lot of engineers throughout my pretty much entire life, and I think this month is, what is it, February 13th is Engineers Appreciation Week or something like that, Craig?
The Hallmark.
Yeah, how about that? So just a shout out to our engineers and our staff engineers as well, that they do a fantastic job for us. We are not engineers. I mean, I'm a geologist, although I work with them all the time. I understand quite a lot, especially I have a construction background as well. But they do a fantastic job, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Don't be so hard on them all the time. I love to tease them.
Yeah, we love Craig.
Yeah, we love him.
It's the month of love, Craig. We're going to show you some love.
That's right.
Get back to it in March.
All right. So I see we have a big audience, and it's nice to see all our, or as many of our police officers as we could have here tonight. We're going to have a swearing in, and I'm going to hand the floor off to Chief Donnelly. Chief, you want to come on up?
Good evening. How are yous?
All right.
Always a pleasure. This is one of the two good things I get to do with my job, hiring and letting guys retire. It's a, people retire. It's a great time when you get to bring a person of Morgan's caliber in and get to bring them up here and introduce them to the community and turn them loose and let them do their great work they're going to do in the next 25 years, because it's a long time. But I would present Morgan Heine. Morgan was raised by her mother Linda and her, from Sinking Springs, and her father Jeffrey from Hamburg. She has four siblings, one older sister, and she was born with two sisters and another brother. So she's a quadruplet. Like I said, she's from Sinking Springs. She was a Penn State graduate in 2020 with a degree, bachelor's degree in criminal justice. She was a 2022 graduate of the Montgomery County Police Academy. So she's certified in Act 120. She will start Monday morning in our FTO program, which is rather long, and she'll learn, and she'll be assigned to an FTO for probably about the next six to eight weeks. A lot of family here this morning, see her gets sworn in by Judge Fennello, and I believe her mother and father are coming up with her. So Morgan, come on up, and the Honorable Judge Fennello.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Make sure that's on, Your Honor.
On the upper end. So good evening, folks, and to echo Chief, this is one of the better things that I get to do, start a nice young woman off on her career in law enforcement. She has a lot of support there in the corner, or you know, her future coworkers are there, and a bunch of family that came a long way. You know, I mean, Saint Hamburg and Sinking Springs aren't really around the corner in Bucks County. So to know that she has that support from her family is probably be, got to be a great feeling for her. And she's very accomplished, and we look forward to her accomplishing more good things in Warminster. We welcome her, we welcome all the family to town. And without further ado, let's swear her in and make her an official police officer in Warminster. Okay, Ms. Heine, you prepared to take the oath of office?
I am.
Okay, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Morgan Heine.
I, Morgan Heine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support, obey, and defend.
That I shall support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of a patrol officer.
The duties of a patrol officer.
In Warminster Township.
In Warminster Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear to uphold, obey, and enforce.
I also solemnly swear to uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color, sex.
Color, sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicapped or disability.
Handicapped or disability.
Congratulations, Officer Heine. There's only about 50,000 people watching.
Welcome aboard, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Well, to welcome aboard, Officer Heine, and thank you very much for the privilege of swearing your in.
Thank you.
And I have one thing to say to Mr. Kenner earlier. You guys need a stronger lobby up in Harrisburg. Everybody else gets a month, you get a week. With that.
I'll work on that, Judge.
Thank you, Officer Heine.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
I got it. It's already safe to leave the fire.
All right. Congratulations, and well deserved. And we're looking forward to, I believe, a few more as soon as they get through the vetting process. So wonderful to have you aboard, and good luck. Be safe. Yeah, we can take, we can take a moment and we'll have some photos. Yeah, why don't we do that? Let's take a, like, take a five-minute recess. You can have some photos.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All right, we're going to continue on now. We have some presentations of, oh, wait, should we do the continuing? Yeah, if you, if the board has no objections, I'd like to, we don't need a motion, do we?
Not to move it, no.
We're just going to continue the 700 York Road Drake Motors conditional use.
Okay.
Any objections?
None.
Okay.
And that'll be continued to March 2nd.
March 2nd, yes.
2023 at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Quick job for the stenographer tonight.
Yeah.
Get home early, buddy.
All right. Now, let's get to presentations. We have the 2023 road program. Who's, who's taking the, who's steering here? Aaron? Oh, Andrew's here.
Aaron and Andrew.
With a smile, too. That's awesome. All right, take it away.
All right, 2023 road program, ADA ramp programs, that time of year again. Start with the ADA ramps, it's pretty simple, button drive. We're going to continue where we left off and complete the 2021 program and 2022 paving program ramps. So we'll complete those for past two previous years. As far as the roads this year, I think we're at approximately seven miles right now for base bid with potential alternate for another mile, depending on how the prices come in. As you can see in red, these are the roads that were selected for this year. Joe, can you just slide that down a little bit?
Down or up?
Yeah. Okay, so you see that there's two portions. Up, overlooked Byron area, we're focusing on those roads. They haven't been paved since 1993. They're in pretty bad condition, and that'll complete that portion of that neighborhood. Newtown Road, another one, hasn't been paved since 2004, and an adjacent neighborhood where Washington is, that, that could be, potentially be an alternate as an add-on. Parts of the road have been paved early 2000s, but the other half of the roadway hasn't been paved since 1991. So again, it's, the road is outlived its life expectancy at this point. The other neighborhood that we'll be focusing on, which will complete everything except for two small portions where utility work needs to be, everything west of York Road will then be completed if we finish the portion beyond the avenues and between the Henry Ave. So that neighborhood as well hasn't also been paved since 1993. So again, it's, it's well over its life expectancy, and you know, if we continue to neglect it, it's, we're going to be on base repair and much larger expenses than we would have right now.
Okay.
Gilmore helped put the map together, helped do the contract documents, so Aaron has maybe some substantially more specific information regarding his numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
So as Andrew said, we're proposing approximately seven miles of road in the base bid and another 1.5 under the alternate bids. Last year, the township completed approximately 125 curb ramps from their 2021 paving program. We're looking to complete about 54 this week, no, this week, this year, sorry. Survey started this week. We have about 10 ramps designed already, so we're on target. As far as the bidding schedule goes, we will be.
Aaron, can I ask real quick while we're on curbing, will that catch us up?
That we'll be doing the 2021 and 2022 curb ramps this year. So yes, we'll be all caught up.
We'll be caught up?
Yep.
It's 2023.
Well, the paving for 2023 will be, the curb ramps will be next, next year.
So we're not going to do the curb ramps concurrent with the roads we're paving again this year?
Correct. Why? Sorry.
You took the word out of my mouth.
That was the direct, that was the direction from last year to come up with a three-year plan. So if you, in your packet, you have up to 2025 to still catch up from 2020, because we did, what, 18 miles of road? So that was the direction of this board. I know we all don't agree on, and there's some comments from before, but the plan is to continue to do those ramps and then catch up the next year on the ramps that we don't do the year.
I have to make a comment here. I understand going back, but when you pave a road, you tear it up. It makes sense to do it while you're there, rather than revisit. Because residents call me all the time who had to have ADA corners done after the fact, after you had, you know, paved the roads and everything was nice and neat, and you came in and dug it up, you tore up their property, and then you put weeds and seed down. That's not fair to our residents. It's not a good spend of money to pave roads, grind them down, and then come back and dig them back up again. It makes not, it doesn't make good business sense.
Well, you said it was about the seed.
Yeah, because when they came back and they fixed it.
Well, either way, they're going to have to tear up them seed.
Well, I understand that, but if you're already paving the road anyway, and you're grinding and you're already there, why would you spend labor to go back next year to do, undo what you've done already?
Well, we're trying to catch up, and it's, it's a cost.
I understand that.
So do you want to add another million dollars to the?
No, I'm not trying to add a million dollars. It just, you know, do we have a cost?
Going back to '21, we should have paved less roads and did the ADA corners concurrent, and that was discussed at that time, but the board, the board at that time decided to.
You're correct. That was discussed at quite length, and 18 miles of road, I mean, you did not have the funds. I don't disagree, but how it was set up with 18 miles of road, and you guys compromised and came up with a plan, but the direction still has been from this township to do it this way. Should we do it this way, and other townships, no?
So we'll be caught up to this year?
After '23, we'll be caught up. The '24's road program will be doing everything concurrent?
We hope to be, yes. Yep. Because of the amount of road that needed to get paved.
Is there a cost on what roads, what corners would need to be done this year along with this? Has there been a cost associated with that?
We're working on it.
So, I mean, we still do have ARPA funds available.
So Aaron, I think next year, you said we were going to do areas that don't have, that don't need curb ramps. Is that correct, Andrew?
That's it.
Right, so that's why we're going to get caught up. We'll be caught up completely.
Could we do those roads this year, so that that way we have a?
I think we're a little too far in for that now.
Are we too far for that? Okay. I'm just curious.
Well, the problem is that we're trying to get the roads that are in the, are neglected and actually in disrepair. As Andrew said, some of these roads haven't been paved since 1993. So that's, that's the purpose of the road paving.
No, I understand that. I just know that some of the roads on the list are not roads that are heavily traveled, and you could go longer periods of time without paving. And I have one more question while we're at it. Last year, when you did pave, Mueller Road was paved, it looks really nice, but there's a little tiny section that's a cul-de-sac that got overlooked. Is there a possibility to add that as to one of your extras?
We can look into that.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Go ahead, Aaron.
And the potential, our schedule is tentatively, we will be putting the project out to bid next week with a bid opening on February 21st with an anticipated award, recommendation for award at the March meeting, which puts us with construction in early April.
Beautiful. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Andrew.
Do you want to have Mr. Ramey talk about the financing? Or not?
For the road? For the road?
Sure. Go ahead, John.
So we got the proposals from Gilmore for the paving. If we did the full eight miles is in the proposal, which is the base bid plus alternates, plus the ramps, we're looking at about a little over 2.2 million. Currently budgeted is 1.3 million. So we are going over by almost 900,000. I did talk to Andrew McAdams about using some extra liquid fuels money. We've been lucky so far this year on the amount of snow that has fallen. Some other equipment may not be coming in this year, so it could be, that could be pushed off to next year. And so what we're actually looking for from the capital fund, again, at this point, ARPA funds are everything, we just, we have a big bucket of money in the capital. Right now, at the end of the year, is about seven and a half million. We do have some other money coming in. Once we actually do all the projects we have planned, we are still looking at about 5.4 million at the end of 2023 with this extra money, just using that extra 643,000. So we do have the money, it's just going into the future of staying to what we're planning so that we could keep the road program going year by year, instead of depleting that $5 million in the next couple of years. So I just wanted to mention that where the funding's coming from, it is, we're looking at using 750,000 of liquid fuels money, that is restricted money from the state based on the square mileage that we have within the township. So we do get money every year from that, that we could keep the program going, but it will not fund the project, the program completely every single year.
Right. And if you want, you know, at the March meeting, we can go over, you know, what And if you want, you know, at the March meeting, we can go over, you know, what the, for instance, the Delaware Valley Financing Authority loan, the COLI loan is now deep in the play. And we can give, give the board an update on that, what we've been doing with that and what the, what the rest of the makeup of the capital fund looks like. We, you know, we've got a change order for Chantillo Woods for $289,000. So we've been, we've been ambitious these last, this last year or so and, you know, but that's what it's there for.
And that's what, with all these
Go ahead.
With everything that we have budgeted, they were just estimates until anything actually comes in the door. That's, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know change orders or, especially with Chantillo Woods with such a big project, you never know what's going to come in. So we need to keep that reserved for those kind of things.
So in other words, unlike what we used to do, which is spend every nickel we had and then try to figure out where we're going to get another source of revenue, we're actually going to be smart about it and do things and to continue the program so we will always be able to service the residents.
It's almost like a plan.
Yeah, how about that? Almost like a plan, thank you.
Well, we also, we were talking, you'll remember, in a very recent meeting, we had, Jess was here, Jessica Fox was here, talking about the lighting for all the parks. We're going to start with Werner. You know, that's going to be next on the ticket in March. We talked briefly, did you do your thing about the
And that's going to be over about a million, 1.1 million. So it's not like we're, we're spreading it out a little bit, you know what I mean?
And we have the ability now to very shortly get the funding from the state of Pennsylvania, the 1.765 million dollars for the money we put into Warmster Community Park. The ragby grid.
Right, when we get that money, I was always under the assumption of when we get that money, and I don't want to digress here, that that money was going to be used to pay the loans back that were associated with the park project.
Well, we're already At 1.2%?
Yeah.
Might not be, well, it might be not a
But we're, we're working on borrowed money.
At 1.2%, rather than, rather than the old, where we used to go to the banks at 5%, that's right. 1.2% is, you know, it's basically free money, so to pay that off is
It might even have been taken, but to use such a low, the way interest rates are going up, it seems, because if we ever had to borrow money, it would just be a mistake to pay it off the borrowed money at our interest rate.
Yeah, I mean, that's how, that's how corporate America behaves and that's what this is. It's a 48 million dollar corporation, the township. So you have to think like a corporate business person and, and use your money wisely. So I think we're doing the right thing.
No, I agree.
You know, and, and you know what, Mark and Janice, you know, not that I don't, I don't disagree with, it would be best to do it or easier to, actually it would be easier to do it now, but I don't want to just exhaust the capital fund and not be able to do some roads next year. Because the plan that I heard, Craig, if I'm not mistaken, and Aaron, I think we talked about this at the last infrastructure meeting, was that next year, we'll be all caught up on ramps because we're going to do, the roads next year won't have, they don't have sidewalks. So then we'll be actually all caught up.
And that's my only concern that I'd like to see in the future, that the roads and the ADA corners are done concurrently.
Yeah.
Well, as soon as we catch up, it wasn't, it wasn't aggressive paid in progress originally.
We had lengthy discussions, I don't, we've had this, we all agree that's the best way, but when it had so many roads that were in disrepair and the board voted to pave 18 miles, you couldn't, for, I mean, it's still, I think Andrew, Aaron, myself recommend even more this year, and we had to scale it back a little bit. We had an alternate plan and that's how things were. It comes down to how much money, which John just recommended, and the handicap ramps are quite expensive and that's why.
Oh, sure, huge.
But yes, in other municipalities where they don't have as many handicap ramps and we're doing five, three, and we're paving three, four, five miles of road, we always do it, as you said, and that was my recommendation back to the former manager at the time, but then eventually it was like, hey, we can get a good deal and pave, get a lot of bang for your buck doing the paving. It was a large contract.
Right.
You got a great deal on the paving number, but we couldn't do the ramps then.
And you know, and for all those years
No, it's fine, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just, you know, just so that everyone knows that's watching on television, for years, we were only paving three miles of road. So it would have taken us 100 years to actually circle back and pave roads again. And you know what, Mark, and we talked about this, the board's talked about this before as well. It's an unfunded mandate.
Oh, absolutely.
It's costing us a fortune. So we're trying to do, you know, we're, we're doing an incredibly good job, I think, at being compliant with the unfunded mandate, yet not exhausting our reserves. So, you know, by next year, we should be all caught up and then we can do them all at the same time.
Sounds good.
I will tell you, I just want to, Andrew and Aaron do a great job on this. I mean, we were changing, they were changing stuff today before the meeting. Tom and I are talking this afternoon, trying to update the board. So it all comes down to this guy saying how much money we have and trying to project. If the bids come in low, we'll add more. If they come a little high, we'll be back talking a little bit more, but we don't know. The asphalt index, you know.
It's up 43%, isn't it?
Yeah. We got a good deal last, last couple of years, but this year, probably will not. So again, it comes down to how much we can do for the funds. We would love to do more and we had that proposal, but we had to scale it back, so.
Yeah.
That's fine. That was before my time, I wasn't involved in all the conversations. I was just asking, sorry.
Yeah, well, when we did the 18 miles, there were a lot of roads. I know my street was paved a few years back, but before that, it was the original asphalt. So it was almost 30 years before they came through and paved that road again. So, you know, we wanted to get, we wanted to get caught up again and now we have, we have a plan and a program that's, that's funding, it's working, so.
That's great.
All right.
John, and later on, tonight, coming attraction is going to be doing the financial statements for 2022, or the, the statements for, non-audited statements for 2022. And we can discuss the debt fund as well, because now we know what the end of '22 looks like.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Thanks, Andrew. All right, next up is the municipal authority presentation. I see manager and assistant manager
How many curves are you guys doing this year?
That's always open for discussion, right, Tim or not?
I've got some questions for you now.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to update the board supervisors and the public on the important work that the municipal authority is doing for water, sewer, and stormwater services. With me tonight is Dalton George, most of you know him, he's been a great addition to the team. And he's going to talk about the newest service, we're going to start with that, we're going to start off with stormwater.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I figured start with stormwater, as Ken just mentioned, unfunded mandate, so we'll continue with the MS4 program with unfunded mandate. And what we're doing for the township, we always start with an overview of the entire system, just as a little refresher, it's just shy of 269,000 linear feet, which is equivalent to about 50 miles worth of pipe underground. We are responsible for around 2,100 storm drains and responsible for just about 100 outfalls for monitoring on our five-year permit cycle. We continue to have our three-step evaluation process. We're going to be consistent with this. As you can see, with a large system, you cannot just assess it over a year or two. So our goal is to assess about 10% a year, so about 30,000 linear feet. And happy to say, for 2022, we cleaned and televised 33,000 linear feet of pipe, which is a big step for us.
That's impressive.
We've established our maintenance program, so it'll be in about two years within, to owning the system. We have a good idea of where the low-lying inlets are, so we try to attack them before a big rainstorm. But we do, as you could see, 2,100 inlets cannot get to every storm drain, but please call us and add your inlet to the list that we can make sure we inspect before and after rainstorms. And then also with that, just clearing out falls, there's a lot of overgrown brush, and then especially making sure the culverts are free of debris after large storms. And then as you'll see in the next project, we'll continue to plan for future capital projects. This stormwater, just like water and sewer, will be very capital-intensive with the pipe replacement and the upgrades that we have to improve on. And then as you'll see later in the slides, we're very good with organizing and tracking work orders. We have an online work order system, so please, if you have access to the internet, you can go right to our website, fill out a work repair request, and we'll make sure we respond. If not, please call us and we'll make sure we'll take a look. Happy to say, again, since owning the system for two years, we've responded to 250 work orders to date. As I just mentioned, 2023 capital work, we have 2.3 million in capital expenditures. And as Aaron and Andrew highlighted earlier, about eight miles worth of roads. As Janice had mentioned, we always want to be good stewards of the residents' dollars, so we are currently inspecting every storm drain in the line of the paving program, just in case if anything needs to be repaired or replaced. We can get that work done before the road is paved because we never want to have to come back and tear up the road. For example, Meadow Glen neighborhood, last year, we replaced 10 C-tops. So that way, when you come by and pave, it looks nice and clean and they tar the edges. So that's going to, always going to be our plan. And same thing, lumping on to other utility contracts. We have a large sewer force main job happening this year that Tim will highlight. That will be going down County Line Road and Norristown Road. We're also repairing a stretch of about 200 feet of pipe within that contract. So we'll try to piggyback on contracts within the authority, but also, like I had mentioned, staying ahead of any utility work and paving. We have two basins on our radar. First is the Tennyson Basin. For anybody who does not know where that is, that's right off of York Road, off of Roberts and Tennyson. So I'll show you in the next slide, but we compared the land development and the original specs of the basin. Currently, with the soil samples, there are four, there's four feet of sediment in that basin. So you can clearly tell that it's not doing what it was intended for. And just to give some of the residents an idea of how much these jobs cost to get this to a 100-year storm capacity, which is the township's regulations for any new construction, this current basin would be $787,000 for a cost estimate from our engineers. And then the next basin would be Whittier Basin, that's behind Archbishop Wood. Same thing, a little over a million dollars to get that to a 100-year storm capacity. And we did apply for the H2O ARPA COVID-19 grant for both of these basins. That was due in the middle of December and hopefully grant awards will be announced in April. But that is a very competitive process, so we will never fully rely on that. So if we are not successful, we'll probably just do Tennyson Basin this year and look to do Whittier next year. GIS mapping is very important for multiple reasons. One, our staff is still working off of paper maps that we received, were received from Gilmore. And also, two, for emergency management services, Mr. Velton, they use this mapping as well. If there's a spill, they have to know where that storm drain is going to pop out so they can put any measures in place if, if needed. And then after the GIS mapping, we'll perform a drainage analysis on the entire township. So what we can see, what pipes are undersized for today's needs. Most of the pipes are in the ground for about a 10-year storm and today's recommendations are a 25-year storm for pipes. And then, as crazy as it sounds, we're still working through the red tape with FEMA. We have about 13 locations that were affected from Hurricane Ida. I think we are in our 24th meeting with FEMA, shocker, right? But we'll continue to do our due diligence and try to make whole for our residents that were affected. This is just an overlay of Tennyson Basin. As you can see in the red outline, we are taking a watershed approach, where you can see in the purple, when this basin was developed, most likely it was built and sized for that neighborhood. But that red area is 70.5 acres worth of drainage. So you can really see how important this basin is because that's the last line of defense before it goes through the neighborhoods of Roberts Road, where there's been many floods over the years. Even one of our own employees has lost a truck on Roberts Road. So that area has been heavily affected in the past. We rolled out our credit policy last July, our board adopted. This is there to reduce your stormwater fee if you are eligible. There's multiple credit options. We do recommend that you go to the website, read through the manual, give us a call if you have any questions. It is a little technical, but we're here to help and we're happy to walk through kind of what you would be eligible on your property to try to reduce your stormwater fee. And we do have 110 tax parcels to date that have approved credits.
I just, I just printed out my form today. I should have brought it with me tonight, I saved the stamp.
And one of the credits, as you just saw, public participation, working with the township, Park and Rec, the EAC. This was our first stream cleanup. We targeted the basin behind Coles. The AC members there pictured hard at work. I spared myself, Lisa. We were also pictured, did not want to put that up there. But it was a great day, couple hours in November on a Saturday. We were able to collect a lot of trash and debris. I pulled out a pool liner, you know, so it's things that are used as a dumping ground. But we will anticipate hosting multiple events a year that we want the public to participate in. And then just the next few pictures, I always like to just show some of the calls that we get called out on. This was sinkhole on Blue Bell and Davisville on your left-hand side. You know, before we took the inlet top off, that's what we were called to, sinkhole in the yard and the street. And, you know, this inlet, the brick just blew out, you know, over the years. And this was a full rebuild with brick and mortar. This one here on your left-hand side, inlet was completely packed, not draining. We got a call for, after vacuuming it out, you could see in the middle, that debris was probably in there for a long time when the leaves turned that color. That doesn't happen overnight. So we vacuumed it out and got water flowing again. This one here, Lewis Drive, I've know I've hit this pothole over the years. Stormwater inlets were collapsing, so actually both inlets were a full replacement, full box and everything, and we tied it into the existing system. This one here, we got called for a small sinkhole. It appears small, but on your right-hand side is actually a sanitary sewer line. So this was on Valley Road. And to Andrew making us aware, we have intermunicipal agreements with our neighboring municipalities. And Valley Road from County Line to Street Road is actually Warrington's responsibility to coordinate all of the work. And then we split the cost. So this was actually elevated to an emergency job. We had to shut down Valley Road for a couple of days, completely excavate the pipe. And you can see the condition of the pipe down there on your bottom left-hand side. And I promise, these pictures are not copy and pasted, but same thing. Typically, when we get called out for sinkholes, that's what we're seeing, the condition of the pipe. Corrugated metal has a 50-year lifespan and some of this pipe was laid 40, 50, 60 years ago. This is right here on Chestnut, right near the admin building. So the police department called us one night for a sinkhole. You know, we throw a plate on it for a couple of weeks and then we just made those repairs a couple of weeks ago. And then just two last items here, you know, some of the other responsibilities that we have. We were called out by the fire department. This was a tractor-trailer in the industrial park, the brakes popped. So that's a full tank of diesel teetering over a stream. So you can see there on the, on the bottom left, we had to set up temporary controls just in case that, that tank blew. And you had diesel running down the stream. So kind of going back to my point about the GIS mapping, the emergency services has to know where that stream is going to go and discharge to. And then last thing, on your right-hand side, we got a call from a resident. Little stream right on Willow was full of mud. This was actually the erosion and sediment controls from the new housing development in Horsham. After a large rainstorm, they blew out. You know, unbeknownst to them, they had no clue. So I was able to contact the Bucks County Conservation District, who then contacted Montgomery County, and they were able to reinstall the erosion and sediment. But just a couple of other things that, you know, we're responsible for. And as I mentioned, this is right on our website. You can go in, fill a repair request form out, submit pictures. But if you do not have access to the internet, just please call and we'll definitely make a site visit to take a look.
Thanks, Dalton.
Thank you, Dolph.
So how many miles of, you have 50 miles of stormwater conduit. How many miles have you How many miles have you video cammed so far and inspected?
In about two years, I'd have to estimate about 50,000 feet we've, we've televised. So it's a slow process.
So almost about nine miles and eight, nine miles.
Yeah, because we do not have a TV truck solely dedicated to stormwater. So sometimes if there's sanitary emergencies, they, you know, the truck gets pulled off that, that job. But we try to dedicate a week or so to just strictly televising storm. Because it's an intensive process, dropping the camera down and, you know.
No, no, I think that's great. I mean, in two years, you've, you've almost 10 miles. Out of the 50 miles, it's never been cleaned or, or, or cammered. Nice job, thank you.
Thanks, Dalton.
All right, Tim.
Thank you again. I'll talk a little bit about administration, customer relations. Talk about finances a little bit. We rebated to customers $4.9 million last year. As was talked about earlier, loan rates were really low. At the end of 2021, they were at historic low levels. We started the process and finished up January of 2022. We don't have a lot of loans, but we have savings to our customers of $846,000. So we want, we want you to know we're being good stewards with customer dollars. We were an excellent value. I had a customer the other day talk about their very expensive water. But maybe it's, it's useful to compare. A monthly usage of water is about 5,000 gallons. That's an average customer, a residential customer. I went to the local supermarkets, it's a dollar fifty a gallon. So you do that math, 5,000 gallons a month times a dollar fifty is $7,500 a month. And you got to lug it from the grocery store. So what, what our charges are? They're a little less than $39 a month for, for water service that we provide under pressure, tested, meets all the standards and then some. To your house 24 hours a day, 365 for $39. It, we're, we're a great bargain. We're about 39, a little more than $39 for sewer. Again, we can compare it. PA American just put out their new rates. PA American rates for that same 5,000 is $68 a month for water. And a whopping $153 a month for sewer. So, you know, people talk about price changes, the percentage change. You got to guess what the difference is between a municipal-owned WMA system and, and PA American. They're investor-owned. It's 185%. Take those savings. Our water and sewer budget's about $15 million, not counting stormwater. We save those same customers about $13 million a year when you compare it. So again, we're a great value for water and sewer service. We, we get comments from customers sometimes, they don't like to pay credit card fee. We pass on that credit card fee. It's not our charge, it's the credit card company's charge. If you want to avoid the fee, there's other options. You can pay cash, we'll take cash, we'll take a check. And there's an auto pay option that saves everybody money. Saves you the cost of a stamp, you don't ever have late fees. So it, it helps all of us if, if customers are comfortable signing up for auto pay.
You just take cash over at that window?
Pardon me?
You take cash over at that window?
Yeah. Capital improvements, Dalton talked about how the pipe works, capital intense, all water and sewer. Stormwater is capital intense. We have about $9 million in capital expenditures. Again, we have a $15 million operating budget and $9 million for capital improvements. Pipe work is costly, renovating plants, pump stations, very costly. We're going to do paving this year for the 2022 water main projects that we tore up neighborhoods for and get that completed. That's going to, I always say it, it's my favorite time when the paving crew comes through and a water main project is done. Something really interesting that we're doing, a little unique. We, we bought 280 loggers. What's a logger? A logger logs sound. And that's how you find a leak in, in a water system. So we're going to put 280 of them permanently. We have some now that we moved mobily around. We found one in Ken's neighborhood, we found a leak up there by moving these loggers around. But we're going to do permanent. When, believe it or not, when a leak's small, it's louder. So these loggers can detect these leaks in the system and we're going to, we're trying to be proactive, get these leaks when they're small before they leak and become a larger emergency. When the water main breaks, it's a, it's a mess, it's an emergency, we lose a lot of water. So we're going, we're going to be installing those very, very soon. We have a little water main project going through Warminster Community Park to connect Kirk Road and Newtown Road. That's mainly for disinfection. So we get, keep our disinfection levels at, at appropriate levels. Since we shut down our wells, except two wells, we, we used to add chlorine disinfection at each of those wells to help in the distribution system. We have a small project on Kirk Road, do a little forced main sewer. Sewer pump station upgrades, we have about 16, I think is correct. Some of these pump stations during this rain, they run 24 hours a day. So you got mechanical pieces running 24 hours a day, there's wear and tear. We have to keep these upgrades going. So we're doing SPS3 upgrade, we're doing a sewer force main replacement. We're going to tear up County Line Road again. From Meadow, is it Meadow? Hidden Woods, Hidden Woods to Norristown Road, down Norristown Road a little ways. Trying to, we've had a couple of breaks on that and it's going to do some improvements to our, our system. You've replaced the UV system with the wastewater plant. Again, we talked about capital intense. Wastewater treatment plants have a lot of equipment, a lot of expensive equipment. The UV system is a disinfection. So once that whole process, the treatment process is complete, before it goes to the stream, you have to kill any pathogens. UV system is what you disinfect with. Our UV system is more than a couple of decades old. You can't get parts anymore for it, it's time to upgrade. But the part, the UV system itself is a million dollars. And that's, again, capital intense. NuVODA, it's an innovative treatment process. It's pretty unique. Our, our employees are installing the equipment currently. I saw some of it yesterday. This process is, is exciting for us. It's going to help us meet, continue to meet standards, go beyond that. So what happens with NuVODA is it's a wood fiber that we literally take, was it a tractor trailer and a half? And that's full of wood fiber. And they, we put it in the tanks. What the wastewater treatment process is, is bacteria breaking down the waste product. And what we do is on, with that wood fiber, it gives them a, a place to have a bigger colony. So we're supercharging the treatment system. So it'll help us meet the standards and exceed standards. We do lining from manhole to manhole. It helps us, we don't have to dig up the roads. Water quality, always important. EPA is coming out proposing some really strict PFAS regulations. The state of Pennsylvania has, for the first time, done some water regulations. Their levels are very, very low. We continue to provide a high-quality source of water through the Forest Park Plant. We buy 90% of it through them. 10% is through our treated wells. PFAS, and if there's anybody that doesn't know what PFAS is, it's contamination from the military bases, from their firefighting foam. Contaminated all the aquifer under our feet and anywhere in Warminster. But we send out water at either non-detect or very near non-detect. A unique thing that we do, unfortunately, we're experienced at stormwater treatment. We were at a statewide conference on PFAS. We thought we were very unique, but we found out there's like four of these in the nation, stormwater treatment at military bases. We treat at the Air National Guard, which is part of the Will Grove Base. It's still operating, people think it's shut down, but it's still operating. They have a large stormwater basin. The standard, the new PA standard is combined 32 parts per trillion of PFAS in, in the water. They're sending out to the stream that goes into Little Neshamine, it goes through our community. At 5,500 parts per trillion. So we installed, through a cooperative agreement, we installed a treatment system that treated ethylene is now non-detect or near non-detect. One of the only, one of the only couple in the nation. Myria, we can't forget Myria. The Military Installation Remediation and Infrastructure Authority was created because of the PFAS contamination. We received 5.4 million last year. We did zero water usage charge for quarter four of 2021 and no charge in the first three quarters of 2022 and reduced charge in quarter four. The other big part of that money is we connect private homes that have well with contamination in it. We, we're continuing to do that. And I'll stop for any questions.
Thanks, Tim. That is incredible that you take those high concentrations over at the airbase because that stream does cut right through. And if we ever turn our system back on, we don't, we won't be pulling any water out of the streams into the aquifer. The only question I have right now, and I think I, I know the answer, I believe, but I'll let you say it to the public. We applied for Myria grants again for this year, did we not?
Yes, we did.
And have that been, have they been approved yet?
Yeah, 4.2 million was approved for this year.
Great, so we'll be getting an additional 4.2 million, which will go back to the customers.
Correct.
Great, thanks very much, appreciate that.
I got your, your, your flyer, the announcement flyer. Next time, can you stuff that in with my bill, save some postage? I got them both the same day, I thought, stuff that in with the bill.
We, we want to get that information out. And if we can, we do, we do it, we did it in the past. But sometimes it's not practical for us to do that.
Yes, I got them both, the postmark, I think you just stuff that in with the bill.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dalton.
I know. On your paving for 2022, is that Speedway? Where you?
Oh, yeah.
Is that just the, yeah, is it just the streets that you, that the Water Authority did, correct?
Correct.
And do you know how many miles?
How many miles are in the Speedway?
Yeah.
No, I don't know that off the top of my head, I'm sorry. I can, I can get it, about two miles.
You guys are doing two miles? Okay. I want to find out the difference so I can see.
Thank you. Any questions, Kathy?
Thank you.
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
That Tim and your team are doing a phenomenal job and everybody is noticing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in, Kathy.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Dalton. All right.
Go Birds.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
We're going to talk about that later.
All right, so let's move on to land use matters. I guess to start, tonight's proceedings will be the Trident QSR Warminster LLC for 700 West Street Road, preliminary and final planned development, which would be the Arby's.
Yes, on behalf of the applicant developer, it's John Van Louveney. I'll turn it over to you, John.
Thank you, Scott. And I'll be very brief. This is a very simple project. This is the redevelopment of the vacant former Solid Works pad site in the Center Point Place Shopping Center. The project is essentially a simple modification of the building by taking off an addition that was constructed on the west side to accommodate walk-in freezers. So we're just restoring the building to the original site before the freezers were added. And they're putting a drive-through on that side of the building. But that's essentially what it is. Number of parking spaces has been reduced, there's a slight reduction in the impervious surface. We've been through all of the review letters and I think we've complied with virtually every one of the comments and the rest of them are all will comply. Mr. Holbert was kind enough to forward to me a resolution, which we have reviewed and the applicant is agreeable to all of the conditions and all of the terms of that resolution. The only substantive, or call substantive waiver is a waiver to permit a 10-foot wide drive-through on the west side rather than 12. Although your ordinance permits a 10-foot drive-through where you have a double-wide drive-through, we have a bypass lane, so from our perspective, it's essentially the same as if we had a double-wide drive-through. And that's the only substantive waiver that we're requesting.
Yeah, Craig.
Thank you. They originally submitted a sketch plan, which we worked out a lot of the issues. And the last item was what Mr. Van Louveney mentioned was the bypass lane and that is a requirement of your ordinance. We worked out, originally they weren't going to supply it. This township in the past has always, you know, enforced that regulation. So the engineer in my office worked out, small reduction in the width, but it does provide that escape route around the building. As John mentioned, there's no other issues. They've complied with all your ordinances. The only other waiver was existing features. And as customary with a redevelopment, where we already have all the information for the shopping center and I don't really need any more digital files or paper files. So showing the same thing over and over of all the development along Street Road. So it's ready for your approval tonight. I have no other comments or objections.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any comments or questions from the board?
How tall is your drive-through? How tall is the drive-through? Okay, thank you.
Will you make it? Will you make it?
Nope.
There you go.
Four to one.
All right, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, hey, guys, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you, John.
When do you open? Okay, good. Right answer.
John.
Josh?
John, you just have to come up here to sign.
All right, where are we going next here? Evergreen Plumstead Manor LLC, that's 114 to 120 Evergreen Avenue.
Yes, this is a application for a preliminary land development approval on behalf of developer here, Mike Malloy. I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you very much, Scott. Mike Malloy with Obermeyer Redmond Maxwell Hippel, thank you very much here with Plumstead Manor LLC. Again, another very straightforward application. We have a 20,250 square foot lot. It's proposed, and maybe we can get the, I'm not sure if the plan can get up on the screen, proposing to remove the existing single-family house, combine two lots to create a 3,036 square foot building with commercial in the ground floor and three apartment units on the second floor. And the board has seen this in conditional use before for the parking. It's been through zoning for the special exception, I believe. Special exception, I believe, I did not do the zoning, but special exception.
Conditional use.
Conditional use, oh, I'm sorry, the conditional use was for the parking, but the zoning actually allowed the residential units.
Oh, yeah, that was.
C1, commercial district. So the township's seen this, it's been through a couple of reviews. I have Rachel Bush from Showalter and Associates who can walk you through the waivers if, if you care. There are three. And other than that, we're here to answer any questions the board might have, but we understand it's a pretty straightforward application. Again, we're here for preliminary, so we will be back eventually for, for final land development approval. Thank you.
Craig.
Actually, Rachel, you want to go through the waivers since they're a little more detailed? This is only for preliminary, so unlike the other one where it's preliminary final, we worked out every issue. we worked out every issue. If they receive the request for the waivers, then they can move forward with final design. If they don't, then they have to rework a few things on the preliminary site. I'll turn over Rachel first for the waivers.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Rachel Bush with Showalter, design engineer for this project. As Craig indicated and Mike indicated, we have a series of review letters from the consultants that's gone through all the, all the comments and details, have had conversations with Aaron over at Gilmore. And I could say we can comply with all the comments in, in those letters with the exception of the waivers. So the first waiver is to permit an aerial plan to be accepted for the purpose of providing existing features within four hundred feet of the subject's property. We did do some additional survey down the road for utility tie-ins, but I believe the aerial plan is sufficient for that ordinance item.
And we, we support that waiver.
Second waiver is for cartway widening. The ordinance wants an additional four feet of widening along the frontage of Evergreen Avenue. As I'm sure you know, the neighborhood is consistent with, you know, it's a residential neighborhood, doesn't seem practical or appropriate to do an additional, do additional widening along that frontage. It's about a hundred, about two hundred feet of frontage there.
And again, we support that waiver, given the nature of the development, everything, everything Rachel mentioned, we'd like to keep that residential feel, same curb line sidewalk. It's really no reason to do a small widening for just, just one parcel in existing development. So we support that waiver.
The third waiver is, has a couple of parts to it, it's related to landscaping and buffer yards. So Evergreen Avenue is a dividing line between the commercial district and residential district. Your zoning ordinance requires a twenty-five foot wide buffer yard. Saldo wants a one hundred foot wide buffer. Given that the site is only a hundred and sixty-five feet deep, a hundred foot buffer isn't really practical. So we're requesting a waiver to just do a twenty-five foot wide planting buffer with the evergreen trees and, you know, to be consistent with the intent of the screening that the zoning ordinance wants. And along that same lines, the quantity of buffer plantings is related to the width. So being that we're requesting the waiver to be reduced from, sorry, requesting the width to be reduced from a hundred to twenty-five, we would request that the number of plantings that can fit be, the plantings should be reduced proportionate to the reduction of the buffer width.
And we have another waiver, I think, in our packet that we skipped on the sidewalk.
Yeah, there's number three.
But yeah, but jumping to number four, I know it's long. Really, the bottom line is the variance is granted and the size of the parcel, we couldn't, they can't meet the Saldo requirements for buffers. So a hundred foot buffer would, would make it null and void, the project's too small. And then the variance is granted, just reduce the width too much where they can't actually plant, you know, what's required by ordinance. So I support that waiver. We typically do not grant this type of waiver, but given the variance is granted and the layout and the size of the parcel, we do support that. And then if we ju- jump back up, and I don't, I'm not sure she has this, but a last minute change was to the pedestrian access for the sidewalk. I don't know if you have that, if you want to go over that.
It's twenty-two dash five thirteen point one.
Yes, just describe what that is then.
So your ordinance, or in the recent review letters, there's been preference to show a sidewalk connection from the proposed building out to Evergreen Avenue. The ordinance requires a six foot wide sidewalk when it's, when the sidewalk is adjacent to the curbing, and so this would be along the parking lot. So we're requesting waiver to allow that sidewalk to just be four feet wide instead of six feet.
And then again, we did work this out, there was a compromise with the layout, so we said we would support this. Again, the variance is granted, the type of use, and again, the size of the parcel kind of dictates us. Their app against the maximum impervious, they were granted the number of units and the layout. So we really need to amend that with, and the parking lot can't be changed either. So there's no other changes to help reduce the impervious. And I, my staff felt that four feet was adequate. They also worked with us on the layout, so we do support that waiver as well.
Okay.
And I believe that is all, those are my comments as well. Everything else has been worked out, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Second. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair votes aye, motion carries five oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Vince.
Hey, Rachel? Get your client to sign.
One second, please, I had to. All right, so next up is twelve fifty West Bristol Road LLC for the twelve fifty West Bristol Road preliminary land development.
So again, Mike Malloy from Overmeyer. This one I asked to, to put on the bottom because I know that there's a lot of history here. And I'm not sure who was involved, if anyone, in this room on the history of this project. But back in two thousand and ten, there was a settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement was between Walter Studley and Michelle Studley, who were the predecessors entitled to this project. And I can say I've been involved for a few years now. And it's been, I think that a good, solid effort on the applicant's side and the township's side to try to come up with some balance that gives an acceptable development, that also stays true to the settlement agreement. And what I mean is the settlement agreement had this, had this plan attached to it. And the plan allowed for townhouses. It talked about a density. It said that the plan had to meet the other requirements of the zoning ordinance if it didn't grant certain variances. And I can tell you, we've worked really hard, I think, to come up with a preliminary plan that, that tries to strike that balance of, of working within that settlement agreement and also paying very close attention to, you know, I've never been here before, but I feel like I have because I know what you guys care about. You care about, you know, environmental features, you care about the environmentally sensitive areas, you care about wetlands, you care about things like that. And we've gone from twenty-six units down to twenty. We've pulled units out of environmentally sensitive areas. We've curtailed impervious surface to meet the requirements. And, you know, it's, Craig can tell you more about this. I mean, it didn't say, here's the requirements. It said, well, here's a townhouse use, and the only place that's allowed in the R two district is under multifamily. And we're not really multifamily, we're just townhouses, right? So we've been trying to fit within this round peg into a square hole kind of thing the whole time and come up with what we think is a plan. Now, and I'm going to ask Rob Cunningham, who's the engineer, to walk through the waivers. And it sounds like there's a lot of them. But, and it, it really would be important if we could put the plan, is there a plan that we can put up on the screen?
No, I never sent anything.
Do you have it? So I mean, I thought, we had it for the planning commission, I'm sorry, I thought we would have it here. But Rob can walk you through, because I think once the waivers are explained, you really see what very limited details we're asking waivers from. You know, it's, it's, it's really small areas of relief to make this plan happen. And I understand, you know, we may not like the townhouses, it may not be the best thing, but we're, you know, I just said we're stuck within this settlement agreement and this court order that enforces that. And so we needed some sort of basis to work from. And that's what we kind of worked from and jumped from it. And I, you know, we're, we're really trying, trying to work with everybody. And we have been trying to work with Gilmore and the other consultants to make sure that we, you know, really tried to drill down and find something that, that, that would work. So we're happy to answer any questions, you know, you guys have about the plan or about the settlement, you know, our, whatever, we think about the settlement agreement or whatever. But Rob, I think it's important, since there are, there are a lot of waivers. I mean, it's a tough site. This is not an easy site to come up with a solution for, okay? Given the parameters that we have to work within, the ordinance, the settlement stipulation. But Rob can walk you through, and then we'll go from there. And sorry, go ahead, Craig.
No, I was just going to, because we could be here a long time, and normally I chime in after each waiver like I did in the last two. But you guys have heard me talk enough, I agree with your summation. I have plans upon plans upon plans, prior engineers, prior attorneys, I am the only one sitting here that probably has been involved since two thousand and ten, I started in two thousand and eight. And I'm not sure the use is the biggest, and you mentioned the use, I get a lot of questions from everybody. The waivers are going to be, we need to go through them. But I think you need to hear from the board. You've already heard from me, I know we all don't agree, I know both you very well. So I asked that the board chime in when you hit probably natural resource and a couple other things. It's going to be a little different, and I would, would request that the board chime in on their thoughts. So you have input directly from them, right?
We've been looking forward to that.
I know, and that's what you're here for.
Awesome.
Planning Commission did grant you approval.
Yep.
I did update everybody on that. I think this board gets into the waivers a lot more than maybe Planning Commission did, and so I'm hoping to hear some feedback from them on each one, so.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I mean, if you want, I can go through the plan, just describing every, I don't know how much the board has seen it.
They haven't seen, I tried to update everybody through this process, but just tell, how many units?
Sure. The plan, the plan I handed out on our title block is the current plan before you. The second plan I handed out was the settlement plan that was prepared and agreed upon. So we, our proposed plan keeps in the spirit of that. We have twenty townhouse units in four blocks throughout the site. The site has an existing driveway which runs along the eastern property line and kind of creates an intersection with Graham Way in Warwick and Bristol Road. So our proposal is to kind of use that driveway location and widen the driveway to be, instead of a twelve-foot wide or fourteen-foot wide access, it would be a twenty-six-foot wide access, two-way. And, you know, kind of improve it and pave it to today's standards. That driveway would continue back as it does today, leading to kind of a little loop road that had the twenty units on it. If you compare the plans, we try to keep it the spirit of it through discussions with the township staff over the years. You know, we, we try to rotate buildings so they weren't facing neighbors, we tried to increase setbacks where we could, preserve natural features, things like that. The site is located on Bristol Road, just up from the, from the creek crossing. So we, we do have some flood plain that encroach on the property, flood plain soils, there are wetlands, there's other natural features, obviously. So the redevelopment of this property is a challenge, and we try to keep in the spirit of working within the confines of the ordinance, within the settlement and those things. So, so the plan before you, we think does a good job of trying to do that. I can run through the waivers, we do have review letters from the consultants. Generally, they will, they will comply with the exception of the waivers I'll go through.
Rob, before you do that, just for, I know not everybody has the plan, the original settlement plan, how many units were on that one?
There's twenty-five units.
And you proposed originally to keep, I think, the existing structure, and that was going to be broken down into two units.
That is correct.
Through all the plan revisions, that's now been eliminated. So you've actually reduced, you've maintained the layout of the, of the driveway. Parking has been reduced because of, once you start engineering it, the natural resource impacts.
Well, parking, parking has been reduced only in, we're now providing two cars in the driveway, and before it was one car in the driveway.
That's.
So every unit's now going to have their own two parking spaces.
So that's good, yeah, that's a big change.
Instead of everybody trying to fight for them. That's.
So you meet the parking requirements now for each unit.
Correct.
So that's a good. And one thing I struggle with trying to answer questions over the last couple of years with the board and staff, the settlement plan, the reason for the changes and the reduction of density, the original units, some of them were shown in wetlands or restricted areas.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So those are where you're going to go next with the waivers. But the settlement plan that was submitted by the applicant at that time showed units that could not be built that violated natural resource protected.
Right, so there, there was additional wetlands found. When going to design it to today's standards, you start applying buffers and repairing areas and things like that to wetlands, and it started to shrink the, the development footprint. Obviously, we tried to keep the development footprint kind of similar, and the property is developed in, in the area where we are redeveloping is essentially the area that is developed today.
And per, per our prior discussions and working through all these plans, the units now respect the same, if the unit was seventy-five feet from the rear property line from the existing residence, you, you meet that now, correct?
Correct. It was sixty-five feet, it is.
Sixty-five.
Still sixty-five feet.
So that was not one, some of the original plans reviewed, and some of the history was trying to, as Mr. Malloy said, work through a lack of guidance, a lack of conditions of how we were supposed to develop this given the impact. But the residents along this property boundary, the units are no closer than what was on the settlement plan from two thousand and ten. So that is another reason it got constrained as far as your layout and had to work on reduction of the units in addition to natural resources.
That is correct.
I'll stop interrupting.
Sure, I'll go, I'll, I'll just get, get into waivers and we'll kind of explain some of the design decisions we made. The first waiver is four oh six point C point two of Saldo, which is the four hundred foot overlap. As, as always, we'll provide any additional surveyed information that Craig's office would request or the township would need. But we've provided an aerial photograph to kind of see what's in the area, but I'm pretty sure everybody's familiar with, with what is going on along Bristol Road. So we just request that waiver. The next waiver is from section five, ten point one. Each townhouse is pushed relatively close to the street. In order to do that and, and work with townhouse construction, you marry garages up, so you'll have a driveway that's two percent, but as the road slopes, you need a driveway at six percent to have those at the same elevation. So when you have a block of six and you're trying to, to kind of work within the architecture, you'll have a driveway that is relatively flat.
I'm sorry, what document are you reading from, so we can all?
Oh, there's a waiver letter that was submitted to the township, last revised November fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
It's on your letterhead?
So, so where, where are you?
I'm on number two.
The pen dot scoping? So am I looking at the right letter?
No, it has an H C in the corner.
It's related to the.
Says a Holmes Cunningham letter?
Yes, it is.
It's the twenty-two, the twenty-two pager?
No, it's the, probably at the end. This is going into all the comments.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was going through, I'm like, getting lost, this one?
That one.
Okay.
He said November fifteenth, that's why I was in retard.
What about the letter?
Three guys.
Do you have the draft resolution?
No.
You didn't get the resolution yesterday? Let's not keep going.
Yeah, all right. So they're confused because we have a draft resolution for approval. Waivers that weren't really an issue, we put them in there, which you're going through right now, those couple. All the other ones where we had issues, they're removed.
Okay. Okay.
All right. But that's why there's, they don't have your letter.
I mean, I'll go quickly, and then somebody just tells me when it starts to be an issue.
This letter's dated May 12, 2022.
Is it revised November 15?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so that's what he's going, yes.
Yep.
Which matches your resolution.
Right.
It's just certain ones where, related to natural resources, we removed.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the second one was related to driveway slopes. The third one is related to construction or extending the driveway culvert. There's an existing culvert which goes under the driveway. It's a 30-inch CMP. As we just found out, CMP is not going to last forever. We want to replace it with a 30-inch RCP. But based on where the edge of pavement is today, we're not able to extend it five feet beyond the existing edge of pavement, it would go off of our property. So we're going to construct a head wall, a new head wall, and put a new pipe in, holding the existing location. It's just, there's not five feet of clearance from the edge of pavement to the head wall. The next waiver is to allow grading within five feet of the property line. This is, again, for the construction of that culvert and the reconstruction of the driveway. We are, there's an existing driveway along the eastern property line. We are maintaining that edge of pavement, not to encroach any closer to our neighbors. So, the next waiver is a stormwater waiver. It's a waiver from providing a slope on the bottom of the basin and a couple of other items, which are to allow us to meet current standards where we allow the water to percolate through the ground before going downstream. This basin is designed as an MRC, which is intended to treat, or I guess, increase water quality for the lower volume storms as it leaves the basin.
Excuse me, Rob, there's some people up here that don't know what MRC is.
It's a managed release basin.
Okay.
So it's kind of like an infiltration basin, but when everybody converted to infiltration basin as the hot button issue, maybe 15, 20 years ago, they forgot that we live in Pennsylvania and not everywhere infiltrates very well. So, DEP, in the last three or four years, finally came out with guidance to allow us to treat it like a treatment system instead of an infiltration. If the water wasn't infiltrating naturally, it's not going to, we're not going to force it to do it. So basically, we let it infiltrate through a soil media that we provide, and then it goes out through an underdrain, and then goes downstream as it naturally would occur. You know, it took DEP a little bit while to give us the guidance, but, you know, it seems to be working pretty well.
Now, the reason, one question for you. The reason that it's not, you're not able to make it an infiltration basin, obviously is because it's right next to wetlands, if not in wetlands, correct? So the soils don't, are not conducive to good drains?
Yeah, they're not well-drained soils.
Correct.
The basin is outside of the wetlands.
Yes.
It is adjacent to a wetland, yes.
Yes.
And, you know.
So they're not well-drained soils?
Correct. And, you know, I think, I've probably done about 15 projects in Warminster, and I think we've had infiltration on one facility the entire time we've been here, so.
Right.
We've worked with Craig's office before it actually, DEP gave us this guidance, and we kind of came up with that as our solution in Warminster. Finally, DEP gave us a terminology to use.
Okay.
You know, so.
All right, thanks.
Number six.
Just trying to, the reason I brought that, these questions up are, there's some people that don't understand soils and the engineering or the geology of soils, so I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands as we go through what's going on.
No, you know, and understand, we're glad to let everybody know, and, you know, obviously, it's a tool we have, we like to use, and I'll explain stormwater all day long, that's where I live, you know, so.
Right. Okay.
Item number six is a waiver to utilize some of the existing vegetation to contribute to the buffer requirements. The site does have some woodlands on it, there is perimeter vegetation. We would like to maintain that and utilize that, and then supplement it where needed. So, you know, we would look to still provide a robust visual screen, it's just, we wouldn't be planting new, all the required plantings in the buffer, but we would have the quality of plants and the visual screen that I think the buffer is requiring, or attempting to Number seven is, actually, number seven through 12 is all related to natural resources. So, I'm planning to get some comments there, but number seven is related to waiver to permit disturbance to steep slopes in excess of the permitted areas. The site is relatively flat, there are some areas adjacent to the existing structure that are actually steep slopes. So, those areas will be disturbed during demolition and construction, and there are areas that are historically disturbed. So, we're requesting that waiver.
Rob, let me interrupt you. Are they, because I didn't, I'm not sure I recalled that. Are they all man-made, or there's some that are natural? I understand man-made around the structure they're removing. I'm okay with that.
Well, and then, so, like, is man-made associated with the driveway pipe that?
No. I mean, yes, that's.
Well, but then downstream of that, it creates, so as we widen, we're disturbing the steep slopes that kind of eroded when the driveway pipe was put in.
All right, well, we'll need to separate those, work those out.
And my point was to not get in an argument of what's man-made and what's not man-made, and the applicability of that. It was more of, obviously, when, and you know, and the board is now learning, we try to limit the development as much as possible. The improvement to the driveway is just to make it wide enough to support the development. We're not trying to make it wider or have additional disturbance. So, we can work through, you know, the definition, and if we actually need the waiver based on what is out there, but.
Okay. Okay, so what you're saying is, in your language, in the waiver request, it says primarily associated with historic fill. So, some of it may not be historic fill is what you're saying. Some of it may. Or it's.
Right, right. Or historically disturbed areas, because historic fill has a different connotation depending on what your industry is.
Right.
So, historically disturbed areas, there are some areas that are not necessarily associated with that, but the bulk of them are. And they're around the structure, and they were part of the kind of drainage system that was.
So you're, what you're using, your definition of historic fill is actually historically disturbed areas?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, because there is a huge difference.
No, I know, I understand, I understand.
Okay, thanks. Talking to a geologist.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Rob knows. I just want to make sure that we're all clear.
Yep.
That's all.
The next waiver is related to woodland disturbance. We're requesting a waiver to disturb more than 30% of the woodlands that are not located in environmentally sensitive areas. The site has a lot of environmentally sensitive areas. So, we are, let me see, is it? So we are, we're preserving a much larger number of the environmentally sensitive woodlands, however, because of the limited areas that are not environmentally sensitive, we are over the 30% permitted.
Do you have those marked on this, on this C1?
It's not on that drawing, it is in the set. So the amount of areas within, woodlands within environmentally sensitive areas is 49,000 square feet. The woodlands outside of environmentally sensitive areas is 9,000 square feet. So, of the woodlands on site, basically about 15% are outside of environmentally sensitive areas. So, we're preserving 100% of the woodlands in environmentally sensitive areas, and therefore, you know, we obviously limit our disturbance to the woodlands that were outside of it.
And what percent is that then?
We're disturbing 57%. So we're disturbing.
And the words last 30s?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. If you took a, if you took a look at woodlands overall, we're disturbing less than 15% of the woodlands on the property. Number nine is a waiver to permit removal of trees greater than 24 inches. Obviously, due to the location of some of the existing trees, even the ones around the existing house, they're in excess of 24 inches, so a waiver is requested. Number 10 is a waiver to permit disturbance to the water course. The disturbance of the water course is limited to the installation of the driveway pipe. So, we're expanding the existing driveway pipe. Downstream of that is considered a water course. We would be disturbing that to extend it, and then obviously construct the culvert and sidewalk, or the headlong sidewalk on that side. And then obviously, any permits we need from the PADP would be obtained. Number 11 is a waiver to permit disturbance to Zones 1 and Zone 2 of the repairing buffer for the construction of the shared driveway, as I mentioned, the waters that are associated with that driveway pipe, the stormwater management facility, and construction of the units on the western portion of the property. Number 12 is a waiver to permit open space, open space areas to be less than 75 feet in width. As you can see on the drawing I provided, that crosshatched area is the area that is open space. There's other areas that are not being disturbed that don't count towards open space for the ordinance, but essentially, there's a lot of open space on the property. We do have a pinch point when you start taking out the buffers and the setbacks along the western property line. So we're requesting a waiver to allow all of those areas to be open space, though there's an area that is less than 75 feet. In my letter, I noted that the zoning ordinance wants you to keep environmentally sensitive areas in open space, and that is what we're trying to accomplish here. So, the way that we have designed this is that all the areas outside of the units and the driveway would be preserved as open space and undevelopable in the future. 13 is a waiver to, a waiver from providing recreational lands. Obviously, there's significant natural features on the property, and when, I believe that the settlement was discussed, there was discussions about providing a walkway or continuous pedestrian connection between Warwick and La College Park, and our property was one of those, I guess, potential paths. We have tried to provide sidewalk and trails where feasible, without additional disturbance to natural features, and so therefore, we're requesting that waiver. And number 14 is a partial waiver from providing curbing along West Bristol Road. As you're aware, that area is wet, there's the stream crossing, it is in the floodplain. The drainage along Bristol Road runs down Bristol Road, and then it sheets off into the wet areas. We continue to want to maintain that condition and not provide curb beyond our driveway. And those are the waivers.
Okay. I guess I've noticed since, I'm sorry, I didn't get the draft resolution. It wasn't Scott's fault, it was mine, I missed the email somehow, but I saw that some of these.
Could you just go?
Sure, sorry, sorry. Some of these, I see the board maybe has considered already, and some of them haven't. I think that, you know, I would just ask that we, the board, you know, obviously, if we take the preliminary approval, you know, we'd be happy to do that, but we'd like to continue to work with staff, you know, on some of these issues. I mean, I think some things like the woodland disturbance, I mean, you know, 4,500 square feet of disturbance of non-essential or non-sensitive area out of, you know, the amount of woodlands we have on site, things like that, that we'd ask to help drill down on this stuff, because I will say, and again, I didn't want to interrupt, so, you know, we want your comments and stuff, but we're really tight. I mean, it's a very tight plan, you know? We've constrained and constricted us a lot, you know, to pull back. So it's not just a matter of, well, lose these five lots. I mean, we're down, we're down where we're really at the bare bones, I think, on some of this stuff, you know, especially, particularly with, again, some of the stuff that I know the board is sensitive about, like the woodland disturbance and the natural features, so. But if we could, you know, we'd be happy to, obviously, get the grant of waivers and preliminary approval if you're so inclined to do that, but we'd like to continue to work on some of the other ones, so we don't foreclose the opportunity to maybe have the board consider waivers in the future. And again, now, I just wanted to add that in, and I'll be happy to address any of your comments.
So, let me just follow up on that for you, Mike. So what you're saying is, you took a look at the resolution now, just now I prepared.
Yeah.
There were, I believe, five, yeah, five that were taken out. It was 520, C8B, so, actually, I'll make it easier, give me, they're looking at the same thing as I have.
Yeah, great. It's number five on the list.
Yeah, so number five on the list. Number five, number seven, number eight, nine, 12, and 13? No.
No, you granted nine, right? Nine of the 14?
Yeah, nine of 14, so, yeah, so items, so on the list that Rob Cunningham was reading from, item number five.
Mm-hmm.
Item number seven. Item number eight. Item number, sorry, I'm going to get two different sets of numbers here myself now.
No, it's fine. I think.
One second, 11.
You granted nine, right?
And 12, yes.
Nine is in the resolution.
Nine's in the resolution, yeah. So, five, seven, eight, 11, and 12.
Right.
Five, seven, eight, 11, 12.
Are not currently in the resolution.
Okay.
And there are some conditions currently attached related to those, but as he said, this is preliminary approval, and they would not be waivers granted now, but I believe they're asking to continue to work potentially to those waivers.
And I think that the point of that is, is that, so, you know, we have this settlement plan, right, that has these units, and it looks a certain way. There's a point where you take the constraints, and you drill down and drill down, and you end up with something that just doesn't look anything like it, you know? And nobody, this is still under court order, oh, going to threaten you, you know, we're going to go back to court. I'm not going to do that, okay?
We appreciate that. We'd like to work with you.
But, yeah, so would we, you know? But like, we can't, we can't get to a point where it doesn't look anything like it, right? And that's where we're trying to get, you know, where it still resembles something that everybody agreed to way back when, you know, when they bought the property.
You mean the, something that the order agreed to?
Something that, something that previous board and the previous owner and whatever means they did, agreed to this, and we just want to achieve something that, you know, as it says, is substantially similar, right, to that. And when we hit, when we knock off these waivers, and this is just, we'll work on this, and we'll drill down some more.
There's a few other parties that I think would be concerned. I understand at that time, there were several residents that declared party status when this first came in. I mean, I'd like to see that those people notified that there's something going on here.
Okay, so, I'd be happy to look at that. I have no information on that. I've never been told there have been any other parties to this, the only two signatures on.
Not to the settlement.
On this settlement stipulation.
The zoning hearing board decision denied. There was 10 people party status, which triggered then part of the settlement. The condition of the settlement is not based on that, so they, I believe, were cut out of the process.
Yeah, I mean, not to get all legal on you guys, but I mean, they have to intervene, they have to participate in whatever.
Typically, on a larger job, the developers met with some residents, if there's issues, usually there's construction easements that are needed. They've asked me all this, I haven't heard any, I assume you have not talked to any neighbors or any residents?
What have you been talking?
Have you met?
Sorry, yeah, Matt.
Sure.
I mean, perhaps you have, but I'm not aware. Yeah, we just, I couldn't answer for it.
Come on up.
The people that asked for party status, that was related to the number of tenants that were on the property. At the time, I believe there were five. The zoning, the dispute was whether we were allowed three or five. I didn't own the property at the time. I didn't own the property at the time.
That's before my time too, man, I just.
And, and to, to be a good owner, yes, there's five apartments there, two of them are not occupied, we have reduced it to three, to three tenants. So, those, those people were there in opposition to the number of tenants. So, it really doesn't have much to do with, with this.
And they weren't party stat, they were not party status to the settlement, but I get those questions, and I don't know if you guys have met with anybody or.
That's just why, because I wasn't clear either.
And since I've owned it, anytime any of the neighbors have an issue, you know, they've called me, we've cleaned it up, we've taken care of, whatever, you know, I don't, and I don't mean to be ignorant to Mr. Studley, but you're not dealing with Mr. Studley here owning the property, you know? And, and we've tried to be good neighbors, we've reduced it to three tenants, even, we didn't have to because the stipulation agreement was pending, so, I don't know if that's the right legal terminology, but, you know, so, so where I started here was that those people that had party status, that was to that, to that zoning, not to this plan.
Okay, thank you. So, Rob, I have a few questions for you, because you know, stormwater is a mess and more Mr. Township.
I saw a presentation.
Yeah. So, we won't do another presentation on that, but just, just my, just based on the elevations here?
Mm-hmm.
And the proximity to Little Nishamity Creek, right? Is it Little Nishamity Creek?
Yes.
Right. And you're going to have runoff from the street, and then sheet flow into a basin? See, the problem I have right now, honestly, Rob, is I got one drawing, I don't have anything else to look at.
Yeah, I apologize, when we provided them to Paul, the digital files, we thought that they get forwarded on, and that was miscommunication on our part, I guess.
Okay, all right, so, have you done, say, a.
You didn't bring a set of your plans? I have a small-sized set of plans, which is not to share with.
So, it's going to be difficult, quite honestly, for me anyway, without seeing the set of plans.
The big picture.
Yeah. One of the questions I do have for you, though.
Mm-hmm.
Considering the elevations, and I see where you have all the, the hashed areas, have you determined what the high-water mark would be for a hundred-year storm in there, when the Shamy Creek backs up and floods for, you know, the entire area? Have you, have you, have you determined? Because one of the things that I don't want to have to do as a township supervisor, and I think the board may agree, is we don't need our fire company coming in here rescuing people when it's all, when it's ten feet or six feet deep in water.
No, and I understand that. So, so I do have a plan that shows the floodplain. The floodplain is outside, excuse me, outside of all, all development that we're proposing. So, our basin is located outside the floodplain.
So, the floodplain is the high-water mark for, say, a hundred-year or a hundred-fifty-year storm?
Correct, and that's, that's set by FEMA.
Okay.
You know, so that.
I haven't looked at a FEMA map, so, again, I, I'm sorry, but I don't, I only have this.
So, correct, and so, so the, the floodplain.
It's all, it's shown on.
It's shown, it's very, I can actually show it.
It's the darker line, it's, it's hard, but it's on there.
It's pretty small, I can't see.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's all right.
This is the actual hundred-year FEMA floodplain.
There's actually a basin between a hundred-year floodplain.
All right, good.
They have a floodplain.
The print's even small for my glasses to focus on.
Again, I apologize, that's, you know.
That's okay.
So, so the floodplain crosses Bristol Road west of our driveway, about, about eighty feet west of our driveway. So, there, there, there would be no, I guess, flooding of our development, and there should be no flooding of the intersection. Now, I, I do know that the drainage runs down Bristol Road, and we've met with Joe Vellin, and, you know, he's done water rescues along the property frontage, but, but the driveway is high and dry. So, so we're using that.
So, the driveways, the road in and out is, is high?
Correct.
Above the floodplain?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you have, is there another, I think Joe had another comment about an additional access point?
And that's in the resolution, a secondary emergency access, I believe, did you work that out with him?
Should we, yeah, have you worked that out? You just got the, you just got this, so it's, it's going to be hard for us to come up with it.
No, no, that's fine. We, we discussed that with Joe, we thought we came up with a potential solution, which was to utilize the access to the WMA property, because there's a pump station behind us, which would be part of the, the trail connection, I think that the, the town originally anticipated, where, you know, we haven't gotten a favorable, you know, thumbs up from the WMA.
So, that would be to the west, to the west of this?
Correct.
So, the plans that you, they have, you haven't shown that yet, because it sounds like you haven't worked it out.
We just worked that through with Joe.
I know you told, mentioned that to me.
Correct.
Have you worked that through with him?
Yeah, so, we worked that through with Joe, but until, until we had the right to do so, we haven't gotten, you know, we're not able to, to push that forward, but, you know, I, I believe Joe's concern, based when we met with him, was related to flooding.
Correct.
And from everything that we have and, and all information that we know, there's never had to be a water rescue on this property that is currently occupied, and there's never been a water rescue at the intersection. Now, you know, I'm not saying that there, there haven't been floods that have made Bristol Road a mess, and drivers are doing stupid things, but, you know, our development is protected from that as it currently exists.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there a good turning radius for safety equipment?
Yeah, fire truck can, can come down, we widened the road from twenty-four to twenty-six.
I'm just looking down here in this little, the little curve down here, it looks very narrow.
Correct, it's actually designed specifically to get the warmest fire truck around it. As you can see, the two lanes actually are twenty-six feet wide, and that's what Joe required. So, we did that, we provided him with the turning template, he had a comment about cleaning it up, I cleaned it up and sent it back to him.
Okay.
So.
So, that, you'll, you'll show that on, on another drawing?
Correct, yeah, as we go through final approval, obviously, he'll be reviewing it again, but we talked through that.
Step in for one second, too. You know, the only access point, and again, we don't control it, that we can find is through the municipal authority land. If the board, you know, is so inclined to, and desires this emergency access, even though we think that, you know, this emergency access is a good thing, yes, you know, it's intrinsically a good thing, right? Do we need it? Do we require it? No, the driveway doesn't flood, you know, we don't think the driveway floods. But if the board is so inclined to encourage the municipal authority to assist us with this, we'd greatly appreciate it, because we have approached them, they have said no, and there really is no other way to comply with this, you know, this requirement. And we're hoping, I mean, I guess that to the satisfaction of the fire marshal means you don't need it, that would be the easiest solution for everybody, but again, we can't set ourselves up for failure with this resolution either. I mean, if we cannot do it, we cannot provide it, but we'd be more than happy to on the municipal authority's land.
All right.
I'll, so. I'll direct you to couple of the wa, I don't agree with Mr. Malloy that we can go work out with staff, we've been down that path, I need direction. The resolution you have, the reason waivers were taken out is because based on this board's past decisions, it's quite clear which waivers have been granted in the past and which ones were. It wasn't hard for Scott and myself and staff to put it together. However, given there's history, and given the stipulated agreement, and given other concerns on this one, it's been around for quite a while, I need some input on disturbance of woodlands, disturbance on repairing buffers. You've had plenty of applicants ask for these same waivers that have been denied, and I do not feel confident, nor do Scott, of putting in your proposed resolution. It will impact the density, I know they just got it, the other applicants, we all worked it out yesterday and today, so I understand it's not fair to them, but those waivers not being granted does impact the layout and the density. And I'm sure they're aware of it, want to work it out, but I can't work it out anymore without direction from this board. I usually don't say that to you guys, but I have to. I need, if you support all these other waivers, then they have direction, and we can work on finalizing everything.
And maybe I could ask Rob to chime in, off the cuff, kind of quickly, because he knows this plan in and out, about, you know, what that impact looks like from his, just, you know, again, off the cuff thing, so you can get a sense, because, again, it's moving back to what I said, we're drilling down to a point where we don't resemble.
Right. I understand, you know, and I appreciate your willingness to work with us, I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
But of course, I, I have some things that, you know, I do have some concerns, and hopefully we can work, work through them.
Good. I mean, the, just, just to talk through, like, the repairing buffer one?
Mm-hmm.
The, the wetland that came up, where there was units on the stipulation plan, and, you know, it was field, located a wetland, currently, there is paving up to that wetland. There's, there's an existing driveway that is up to that wetland. So, we're, we're actually pulling the development away. Now, the existing is existing, and to even just remove it would be disturbance within the repairing, the, the zone, Zone one.
Is that on here? Your repairing buffer zones?
No.
Am I missing that?
Uh, not.
I mean, there's a couple other dashed lines, but I'm not sure what the, what they indicate.
The line that goes through, looks like it's going to go through the eleven.
Yes, the, the larger dashed.
Is the Zone one limit.
There's a dash, and there's actually a dot, and then a dash, if you look at units, eleven, seven-eleven, so that would impact.
Oh, I got you, okay. Right, so this is the repairing and buffer, this, this dashed line that kind of goes through eleven and through, through eleven through seven, and then kind of turns back?
Yes. So, there's paving up there to the, to this point today.
Mm-hmm.
Now, obviously, it's not a repairing buffer when, when you have a driveway next to it, but like, that is, that is something that, you know, not reflected on this plan, and obviously, this is your first time seeing the plan today, so, you know, I guess we're all educating each other, so, that, that is, that is a condition that would be improving just by pulling the houses ten feet away, and it would allow us to clean up that area and obviously then preserve it in open space.
Do your plans that you, I know they don't have them, but do they indicate that whole area to be removed and restored to lawn condition, or is that not addressed?
It's not addressed on the plan, but that would be, all, all areas that are disturbed are going to be restored to, to a, a good vegetative cover. And, you know, if, if the, if the board was inclined to grant the waiver, subject to working through a good remediation or restoration plant schedule, that's something that we would obviously entertain.
Now, I know you guys just got a copy of this, but number twelve, the steep slopes, class one, class two, and then class three steep slopes?
That's what we just talked about, the man-made.
Exactly, so, we're going to have to determine which ones they are?
Yeah.
So, you're saying.
In terms of the ones that were omitted, that one's less impactful than some of the others.
Right.
Obviously.
Okay.
You have the tree, the woodlands disturbance as well, that's.
The woodland disturbance, yes. Now, the environmentally sensitive areas, I'm not quite sure on this figure that I'm looking at, this one.
Mm-hmm.
Are, how are you proposing to, to have less of a footprint in that environmentally, in the, in the repairing zone? I'm sorry, it's the repairing zone, which is an environmentally sensitive area. So, what were you planning on doing here? All right.
This is that wetland, this is, right, this is the current footprint.
Right.
This comes all the way out here. See that?
Mm-hmm. So.
So, we're pulling everything that's developed up to these woodlands away, further away. So, our stormwater basins going here, and then all the units are going in here.
Okay, so then these are, so it's not, it doesn't look like this then, right? Is that what you're saying? Doesn't look like this?
Here's a wetland, right? So, currently, you're, you're pretty much in the wetland.
Right, currently.
And we're going to pull, we're going to pull that one a little bit away.
All right.
And then this area here with the, the house and the development around the house comes in here, we're pulling out of that, and then we're putting our basin.
Right in here, okay.
Outside of there.
I got you.
So, in terms of natural features.
Of course, I saw it, but no one else did.
I apologize, okay. Kathy, did you get that?
For the record, this is the most you guys have ever looked at a plan in this detail.
Well, it's, it's, there's a lot of issues.
There's a lot of things here, quite honestly, and there's not a lot of, we don't have, we don't have all the information, so is there something we can do?
Scott and I just sidebarred, yeah.
Would you think with these, you know, we talked about these five, we drill back, they have it, we get it sort of mapped out, planned out, so they can do a better show over the screen?
I would actually appreciate it.
We would too.
Yeah, I would really appreciate it.
Table it tonight. Yeah, I'll, I'll look back and spend another half hour.
Yeah, because, quite honestly, I look at every, you know.
Of course.
I may not have as many questions, but I look at every set of plans like this.
Yep.
So, and Rob, Rob knows that I'm.
No, I think that's.
It does appear to me that, that, you know, from ten thousand feet, that we can work through this.
Yeah.
I don't know that we can.
I don't know that we can. I'm not, I'm not being disagreeable or confrontational.
Yeah, no, for sure, I think we can, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, so should we motion to table, or?
You can do much, though, yeah.
I recommend you do that.
All right, you guys, fair enough?
Are you okay with that? I'm not going to make a decision for that.
Fair enough?
Absolutely.
I mean, that way, we all have time to look at the full set of plans, you guys can look at the, at the, the resolution.
Yep.
And then we can.
Reconvene.
Reconvene and.
We'll walk you through.
Exactly.
Figure out.
I think that would be advantageous to both.
Perhaps Prescott will have an opportunity to be in the room as well.
Yeah, yeah, at that time, Kathy will be better, and she'll be actually here as well, because she's reviewing this at home, and I don't even know that she has some of these drawings.
That makes perfect sense, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
All right, is there a motion to table?
Nice to get it out.
Thank you.
Every time, so to.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments from the?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I think we should table it until Mark's last meeting, so we can go out with a bang.
There you go.
Don't deprive the opportunity.
I don't know that you're going to agree with that.
I think that would have been done by then.
Is it next month?
Yeah. Mark's last meeting, have to sit through this.
That one's going to be a big party.
It'll be December.
When is the next meeting?
Next meeting's March second.
March second.
Yeah.
That would be great, that would be great.
And I think that gives us enough time to, for everybody to look at everything.
Yeah.
Get our, get our.
Get better pictures.
Sure.
And as I've said, I don't think that these, it seems to me that these are things we can work through, it seems to me.
I appreciate that.
Obviously, there's a disconnect here in terms of communication. I just want to know, what do you need from us? We've handed in plans, we handed in.
We need a, when you come before us, we need a full set of plans that we can put up on the screen, so everybody can follow along.
Flash drive.
Yeah, quite, quite honestly, this is the only plan I have, so if, if you, when you come before the board next time, we need, we need to see a full set of plans. Or, or at least, talk to Craig, he'll be able to tell you what plans we need. I mean.
Color. We're going to do a little better.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and you know what, again, I, I don't know, I don't know where, where the disconnect happened, but alls I know is that we, we have a resolution here that you didn't get, we have one plan, some old plan from twenty, twenty-ten, or twenty-two-thousand-five or whatever it is, and it's going to be hard to make decisions based on.
The plan should be clear on what the waiver requirements, what the waiver requirements are substituting for the requirements of the ordinance.
So.
So, if it's three feet, and it's going to be four feet, and if four feet's required, it's going to be three feet, that should be shown on there, so you can walk us through what they look like on the plan.
Agreed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we're asking for much, I mean, we, we don't, we're, we're not trying to be.
I just don't know what you're asking for. How many sets of plans do you need?
What visual?
No, no, just.
Well, we're gonna need one up there for us, for the public to see, for one.
He has that.
Okay, and, and Rob's done that before, um, and then, I would like at least 11 by 17 set of plans for me to look at, to follow along, and may take notes as well, if that's not too much to ask. Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
So, um, any other questions or comments?
Just a vote.
Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank, we'll see you in, in March 2nd. Looking forward to it. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we?
Hold a comment.
Hold a comment. Uh, are you getting up, Pat? Okay. Thanks, John.
Hi, Pat Boyle Centennial Station, I'm also the secretary of the William Tannet Alumni Association. Just want to announce, our golf outing is going to be on June 2nd, at 1 o'clock at Five Ponds. We will probably, tickets are going on sale like next week, and will be sold out by mid-March. So if you wanna go to the golf outing, get in, get your tickets quickly, um, you can go to our, our website, WTHSAlumni.com, and just go to the golf outing, and you can sign up right there.
And sponsors.
And sponsors, yes.
Make sure I get, make sure I get one.
I'll, I'll mark you on my list.
All right. Sponsors.
Okay?
Yes, I know, I already got it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. All right, anyone else?
Johnny.
Come on, John, come on up. Does this mean we're not gonna see you?
Can you get the first and second public comment out?
Let's get it out of the way, that's right.
Yeah, I can do that. Nice to see, uh, we, we have a new hire for the police department, looking forward to seeing him.
Name and address?
No, uh, okay, John Preo was, uh, 674 Joseph Avenue.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, so what I was saying was, it was, it's nice to see a new hire, and looking forward to seeing the, the new, the other applicants that come to the township, it's a nice thing, and, and Mark, I know what you, you said tonight was tough.
Ah.
It rips your heart out a little bit, I know how much you put effort into it, and you and I talk about it all the time, so, you're, you know, everyone, you know.
We're gonna spend some more time with the Rotary Club, right, Dalton?
There you go.
All right.
That's it, maybe another round of golf.
And Johnny, I know you really like that Arby's coming too, me too.
I'm already on it, man, I'm like.
Double R bar going.
What are they opening? I said to Dalton, I said, it's, uh, they make good sandwiches.
All right, thanks, John.
Thanks, John, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and you know, and, uh, I'd like to thank the chief and all his staff as well for, uh, doing a fantastic job through your vetting process, nice, well done, well done, chief.
Election's the biggest thing.
Yep, you're right. All right, let's go to the consent agenda.
No more public comment?
Uh, I don't think so, there's nobody left. John, you got anything to say?
No.
Okay, excellent. Um, consent agenda, all right, let's consider approval of the board supervisors' minutes dated January 3rd, 2023, authorization to opt-in for a national opioid settlement for, uh, Teva, Allergan, Walgreens, CBS, and Walmart, uh, consider approval of resolution 2023-07, authorizing destruction of real estate tax documents prior to 2015. Believe, are they being digitized?
Include, include 2015, or?
So, wait, say that again?
Do, is, is?
Yes, it'll be anything from December 31st, 2015, or before.
Or before.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, do you, uh, wanna talk about the opioid settlement?
Uh, yeah, I can do that now. I was gonna do it during my, uh, solicitor's process that takes the place of this. Yes, as you can see, there's an opt-in option for the national opioid settlement for some more distributors. We got Teva, Allergan, Walgreens, CBS, and Walmart, um, just like we have for Janson, Johnson &amp; Johnson, uh, which other ones have we done?
Cardinal.
Cardinal Health, Marisource Perspersion, you know, these are the settlements that have been being negotiated by, um, the litigating parties, obviously, it's large class actions, numerous ones, Purdue Farm is involved as well. Eventually, that one will come to us. We thought that one was gonna be next, but that's hold, held up in, uh, federal court in New York right now. Um, that one actually might go to the US Supreme Court, but, uh, the five we are seeing now coming through, uh, will be some, the money will be sometime later this year. The combined settlement amounts for all five of them is $20 billion to be spread across the country.
Okay. So it's kinda like a class action, how much will we see, about 35 cents?
Uh, for the class actions?
I'm just kidding, just kidding.
No, 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 I can actually give you that. Uh, the combined amounts, the three we've already done, were about 1.3 billion, and we got around, what was that, half a million dollars, I believe?
Yeah, something like that.
So multiply it by about 20, hopefully.
Okay. Sounds good.
Possibly up to a million dollars, we're looking at for, based on those numbers now, how this will be distributed, it's gonna be a different distribution, so I can't tell you for sure.
Right.
But that's just been about the amounts we've been getting.
Okay.
Uh, in the past.
Thanks, Scott.
John might have more.
Just a quick update, we did get one payout from one of the settlements in December of 20, a little over $27,000.
Okay.
That was the smallest one.
Right. Appreciate that, John. All right, any other, uh, questions or comments from the board? From the public?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We did that already. Oh, okay. Second by Janice. All right, um, so we were a little backwards, but no harm, no foul.
Long day.
Yeah. All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. All right, Mr. McKee, you'll have, uh, about, uh, what, seven of these left?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, ask for a second, to approve the supplemental bill list dated January 20, January 31st, 2023, any amount of $653,197, $97.24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions from the board? From the public? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. All right, John, you're up. December 2022, unaudited, correct?
And I'm gonna apologize, because it's gonna be a little bit longer than usual.
That's just what we wanted tonight, thank you.
It won't be that long, though. Um, but it's good news, so that's why I'm gonna keep, we'll, we'll go positive now. Um, so I'm gonna switch over, we're gonna talk about the general fund, but I'll start with expenses. Expenses were up, again, this is audited versus unaudited numbers from '21 to '22. We are gonna have a lot of adjustments coming over the next couple of weeks, as I get, uh, finish up for the audit and give the numbers over to the auditors, but we're looking at, uh, expenses being up 559,000. Where, it was planned, we were actually under budget, uh, we only hit 93% of budget for expenses, so we did do good, we were, it was, everything was planned, and, uh, on the expense side, we're all right. On the revenues, uh, we went up 324,000. Uh, some of the big ones, again, I almost feel like a broken record with, uh, EIT was up 338, oh, 7%, uh, we just had a meeting last Thursday with the county, 7% is exactly what Bucks County went up, so we're following the county trends. Um, business privilege and mercantile tax, both up again, so, as, these are partially , uh, good indicators of how the economy and how the township's doing, one of my biggest ones is transfer tax. It shows what's happening on a residential level, so I'm gonna dive into that a little bit deeper. Uh, looking at 2020, 21, and 22, the trends that have actually happened with that, um, in 2022, there was 400, and this is something I do on a monthly basis, there was 457 total properties sold in 2022. Um, that's down from 561. We all know, 2021 skyrocketed, and then started coming back down after the pandemic. In 2020, it's still not up to the level of 2020. Uh, there was 470 in 2020, up to 561, still at 457, but on a dollar basis, um, I always break out the anomalies, the big numbers. In 2020, there was five properties that sold between 5.6 million and $7 million. In 2021, there's three properties that sold for 7, 9.1, and then 47 million dollars. I always like to take those ones out, that's why the revenue in '21 skyrocketed, it was that huge sale. There was only one really big sale in 2022. Uh, it was just under 28 million, so taking that out, it does look like it was less properties, but it's a more consistent basis, just sticking to the residentials, that we're, we can count on that revenue a little bit more. Again, with, with interest rates rising, we, we're not exactly sure how it'll go, but this will give us a good trend. Um, sadly, I can't go back any further, because I wasn't here, and I couldn't find those reports to find number of, uh, properties sold in dollar amounts, but, uh, over a three-year period, we can see, like, we were still, uh, the lowest was 2020 at 915,000. Last year, we were at, uh, $1,085, or 85,000, uh, which is still 200 and some, like, we budgeted 825, so we're still like $260,000 over budget, which is a good thing, of, you take out that one sale, we hit the budget, and that's what our goal is every year, so.
You're still gonna continue to be, uh, conservative, considering interest rates are going up, and we'll expect a little less housing sales?
I, I think we raised the budget to, still less than 900,000, which is less than all three of these years.
Good.
So, in taking out those big sales, that's kind of, what I always like to do, is take out the big ones, and say, this is what we get on a year-to-year basis.
Thanks.
Um, the first, uh, look at, uh, the 2022 year end, uh, every single fund had an increase in fund balance, uh, some higher than others, but what that does, though, it allows us to do extra paving and projects. Um, the golf course was the, the, I would say, the big winner of this, they, they had an increase of 877,000. Um, going forward, what we're doing is, we're actually taking that money, putting it over to the general capital, so the township can do projects, but it's also allowing the golf course to make much-needed improvements. The same thing with the, um, park and rec, and the library, they have their fund balances, they've had increases, now they can use their own money to pay for their own improvements. Um, it's pretty much what goes back to the budget presentation and everything I said of, this is what we have, now we could start actually planning the improvements, and then when things come up, like, we wanna do an extra 1.3 miles of roads, we have the money to do it, and we could show, this is, it came from extra transfer tax this year, or something like that. Um, the main thing is that we are keeping our operating revenues for next year, are matching our expenses, so we're keeping, and anything extra we get, that's when we can transfer it into fund balance, and then move that into capital expenses and improvements. So, that's.
So what you're saying is, we're taking more stress off the general fund?
Yes. And, and at this point, the general fund can start moving money over to capital and saying, this is, we could keep those road projects going into the far future, as opposed to, uh, dwindling all those reserves, and one year, we could keep those projects going year after year.
Great. Uh, yeah, of course, we can explore other options as well.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, hopefully that wasn't too long. Any questions?
No, not at all.
No, thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, John, the engineer.
All right, where are we heading? Unfinished business there is none, new business, the revised fee schedule, the convenience fee, uh, Mr. Scott?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, we want to impose, uh, an item Mr. Hagy referenced earlier in his presentation, that, uh, to pass on the credit card processing fees that we are currently carrying, warrants for township, Five Ponds, the library, and, uh, tack those charges on to the, uh, to the customers who choose to use them, to pay for rounds of golf, building permits, things like that.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Second? Any, uh, any comments from the board?
Should we tell them how much money we?
Yeah, we can, we can say that, it's on the bull, it's on the white, the whiteboard in there all the time.
Yeah.
What is it, $79,000 a year?
82.
Eight, eight, 89?
2022 is a little over $89,000.
$89,000, we paid any credit card fees. Okay? So that's an additional $89,000 we could, uh, spend elsewhere. Sure. All right, any questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. All right, thank you, I think that does it for business. Professional reports. Tom, I will, uh, yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I had anticipated having, uh, Director Elton here with us tonight to go over a few things that, uh, we've discussed on and off over the past few months. Uh, obviously, he was, um, he was engaged for most of the day, starting about, uh, 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, with the unfortunate events at, uh, Saxton Manor, so we're gonna defer that to a later date. Uh, I also, Chief Donnelly was kind enough to indulge me when I, when I asked him to, if he would say a few words, I might be able to save him the grief, but if I say it wrong, Chief, you let me know. We're replacing some police vehicles over, starting like midsummer last year, giving the lead time, we, we would need to order them, have them arrive, and we're, uh, upgrading a couple, uh, from, uh, from sedans to, uh, sport utility vehicles, because they're, they were, they're easy for the officers to maneuver in and out of, given the, uh, amount of gear and stuff, that, uh, that, that they, uh, need when they go on, when they go on duty, and, uh, we're able to do this because we now have a certainty, uh, working, uh, with the police union, on what the contract's gonna look like, uh, for the next couple of years, thanks to their cooperation and their diligence on their part, so we're able to have a better understanding of what, what, uh, non-personnel costs a police department So we're able to have a better understanding of what, what non-personnel costs a police department can avail itself of that we've, that we've budgeted for. So we've got, we've got two new, have arrived.
Yes, sir. Two are overhyped.
Getting their stuff put on, so.
Good.
Nice.
They'll be at 100,000 miles in about two months.
Yeah, three.
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Holbert?
Yep. So I obviously talked about the opioid litigation that's going on. That's all I was going to have, so go ahead.
Okay.
You want me to do yours?
That's all we had. He's had a vocal port.
That's all I have for a report.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a February's engineers report. I have no changes from two weeks ago when we went through the report. I think Mr. Hagy and Mr. George are back there waiting for me to talk about more stormwater, but I'm not going to. Unless Dalton wants to come up again. I did want to make just one comment. I know that was a little rough on the one land development project. But maybe the board isn't aware, maybe the residents, but the natural resources were removed from zoning years ago in this township. Most townships make them go to zoning hearing board. And although that was painful, that provides a lot of direction to the staff. When you guys can actually get your hands on it and be part of the layout and changes. Prior, prior to like 2012, somewhere in there, we made changes and took it out of the zoning hearing board because they were just granting them yes or no, with not really any thought. They didn't have my input. And now we have the staff input. And, you know, usually I work all that out before you, you see the projects. In this case, because of stipulated agreement and long history, there's not any budgeting. And we were stuck. So in this case, the process is working. I know it's not the most comfortable, we typically don't do it, but because those natural resources standards are now in SADO, it gives a little more flexibility to a layout and lets this board have more impact instead of zoning hearing board just granting variances and not having the, the benefit of professional reviews done. So hopefully we can have a shorter version of that next month. That's all I have.
I appreciate that. I mean, you know, again, I think we did the right thing with that because they didn't have certain documents and nor did we, so.
You shouldn't have made the motion earlier.
Yeah, we could save ourselves an hour.
Yeah, we're not going to go through all that again, right?
I hope not.
I should have spoken up.
All right, second round, public comment. All right, thank you. Thank you. Supervisors' comments. I, I guess I should bring this up, Tom.
I forgot township managers upcoming agenda.
Oh, right, right, right. Upcoming agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would ask the board that we schedule, we skip the next scheduled meeting for February and go right to the March 2nd, 2023 meeting with your permission.
I don't have too many left. I wouldn't mind having. I think we need two in July.
Any objections?
No objections.
Maybe three in December, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have three in December. One will be going away celebration. Yeah, and that was blank here, that's why I wouldn't write by it.
Celebration.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In a good way. All right.
Why do you think I've been so nice lately?
You have been, yeah. You've been a pleasure to work with, Mark. All right, public comment, we went through that. Supervisors' comments. I'm going to bring this up, Tom. Okay. I just want to, we, we had a, we have, I believe, an ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, about blighted properties. And we can have, there's a four-member committee. One being a board supervisor. One, one member of the planning commission. And two others that will be at our discretion. So if anyone has an interest in.
And a member of the redevelopment.
Well, yeah, I didn't get to that, but yes, there's a, one person from the redevelopment authority from Bucks County. So there are some issues in the township that we've been monitoring and made aware of and actually maybe have taken some actions. But this is going to be an important committee. So I would say to everyone that's, would be interested in being a part of this, to let us know, send an email to us requesting to be on this, on this committee, and then we'll take it into consideration. And other than that, we won't see the engineers before their celebratory week, so enjoy yourselves. I won't call you that week.
They're still good too. I got backup too.
Yeah, hold me to that, that's right. Just don't answer. All right, that's all I have. Kathy, you have anything to add?
Just, I'm still in shock, Mark.
Thank you, Kathy. We'll talk, we'll talk.
He, he did hold that one a little tight to the vest. All right, Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, it's probably the toughest decision I've ever made in my life, honestly. But I, I know I'm doing the right thing for myself and my family at this time. But anyway, speaking of my family, I want to wish my lovely wife Erica a happy Valentine's Day next week. Can't wait to celebrate it with her. And we're all going to celebrate the Super Bowl next week.
Absolutely.
We'll be pulling for the Philadelphia Eagles. Damn right. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Janice?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Valentine's Day. I was thinking Super Bowl and food, so Thanksgiving, I'm just kidding. Happy Valentine's Day. Please be safe with the Super Bowl because we know we're going to all be winners because that's how we roll. But please be safe, be careful, and don't drink and drive. If you need a ride, give me a call.
All right.
You were cool. Sure.
Cheerio.
Okay, go Birds. Good night.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for everybody for being here.